All right. It's come to order the Rules and Government Relations Committee meeting of October 30th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. So, yeah, Dan sent, yeah, Dan Rist won't be able to be here because his wife's surgery. So, obviously, we wish her the best. Let's see, there's no one here from Public or any other councilors. Yeah, Dan did send the minutes last night, but I haven't had a chance to review them yet, so I suppose we just review them and go on when we meet next time.
Sure. Yeah, since they'll be there.
Yeah. But I guess we can get started on this council committee stuff and at least, you know, start that conversation and see where it goes and go from there.
Yeah. I seem to have misplaced some stuff, so can you, I know it was, you want to just orally give me your argument or just why, how you wanted to combine them again?
Sure. Yeah. So, the, it's kind of a shell game, but the big thing that I was noticing was ordinance has a, for the two years that I've been there, had a consistently, like, very, very packed agenda.
Right.
And both property and public safety have often had less packed agendas. So, basically, the way that I was thinking is that, first of all, we move all the street acceptance and utility poll requests to property because I feel like those kind of our property matters anyway. So then property's got a little bit more to work with and that's it for now. Ordinance, we split into two committees. So one of them, for this purpose called zoning and economic development, is basically handling all the zoning stuff and if we do any more stuff about, like, district improvement financing, anything like that, that kind of stuff, goes to zoning and economic development. The remainder of ordinance, so really anything that has to do with the city ordinances or traffic rules and orders or whatever, merges with what is left of public safety to form an ordinance and public safety committee.
So the number of committees remain the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just that the, some of the work from, basically, some of the work that's currently being done in ordinance moves over to public safety. And then some of the work that's currently being done in public safety moves over to property.
Right.
The reason I thought that zoning and economic development, the reason I sort of thought that is that the zoning stuff is really the stuff that, where they're working in tandem with the planning board, which seems to, you know, and for no one's fault, but just because of the
Right.
the nature of, you know, the extra meetings and whatever.
Right.
Basically, double the length of any task. And with, you know, some of the things that I'm, like, a lot of the things that people have been talking about being interested in doing, at least, you know, when I've been looking at candidate statements and whatnot, I'm seeing there's a potential interest in looking more at zoning stuff, which is a huge ask for a committee that's also handling all this other stuff. So if the non-zoning stuff in ordinance could move over to public safety's workload and if then public safety could sensitive to property, I think it would lead to a sort of a different balance.
Yeah. I mean, there's, as the rules are written now, there's no, nothing to preclude basically almost any topic being sent to any
That's true.
committee. So it would allow the flexibility to move things around, but it might be, you know, might, you know, might be worthwhile renaming the committees just to, although that isn't the charter, as I said, council
That's rules. Yeah, there's nothing about, there's nothing that says we can form committees and that's it in the charter. I guess my one reason, and it's true that, like, you know, I mean, and there's, like, we took that liquor license thing one time, that traditionally goes to ordinance, but we handled it because, you know, it made sense and they were totally overbooked.
Right.
But I do feel like, and you've been present long enough, maybe you know this better, but I feel like when we're looking at placing people on committees, there's questions about, like, interests and skill sets and whatnot. I do feel, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I do feel like the, this, like, zoning and the sort of far-reaching consequences of zoning decisions is kind of a different type of thing than, say, ordinance is about, like, public consumption of cannabis, you know, and I feel, or even like the bike path use or whatever, because it's just a different kind of ballpark. And I thought that maybe breaking this out in this way would sort of help clarify to people, like, what kind of work would you potentially be interested in?
I mean, yeah, there are certain situations where the city council may lead and then some other, some committees may support it or vice versa. When it comes to, especially to zoning ordinances, because the city planner is involved with that board and such, I think, in that respect, where the city council ordinance committee is usually secondary because in order to get through a zoning change, it has to be going through ordinance, whereas, I mean, I think most of the, because they're, they have the, or at least the planner has a skill set and that whole board deals with it more, that they tend to push something and then the city council needs to participate because in order to make what they think needs to be done, official ordinance has to agree and has to pass it. So not to say that this ordinance doesn't have a say in it, but, you know, I don't think, I think it'd be really rare, I mean, it can happen, to, for the ordinance to run with a zoning that they have not kind of run by the city planner or something, I mean, because we don't necessarily have that background to just say, "Oh, I think we should do this." Well, maybe you can't do it legally, I mean, so, I mean, there can be zoning, there can be zoning ideas that certainly
Right.
you talk to the city planner and say, you know, "What do you think of that? Well, actually, it didn't work, or I don't think it worked, or that's a great idea." And then maybe so it would be initiated, but, you know, most of the zoning things come from the city planner's office.
Sure. Right, because it's, it's legal stuff that is often the subject
And then planning stuff.
Right.
I mean, does this make sense for our community? And we may say, "Oh, yeah, it makes perfect sense," but the planner may have a whole different set of facts that argue against something.
But, you know, like, you could find, maybe there was a situation where, like, there was somebody who wants to do something currently, I mean, like, the whole keeping of chickens thing. You know, that was Salem saying, "Here's what our current," because that was zoning, right? They're saying that for a chicken coop, it had to be, there had to be a certain setback, and he was saying, "Let's reduce that setback."
Right.
You know, I mean, the language is already there, but he was trying to amend it in certain districts.
Right, because it was true, right. But I know, because at the time Jess Allen was the planner, I know she was very much involved with it too, so
Right.
Again, it wasn't, it may have been someone came to Salem, but, you know, it's certainly always done with the plan.
Sure.
And I think, for instance, and if the planning board voted no, it would be hard for the city council ordinance subcommittee to say, "We're going to go for it."
Yeah, it's bad optics.
I mean, they're, you know, they're the plan, I mean, they're the ones, so, so they definitely have to work in tandem, and sometimes the ideas do happen to stumble into city council, then they go back to planning, and they come back out together, but
Right.
I mean, so that's fine, but I mean, it does, and it happens, but I just think the responsibility and the research behind zoning changes are more from the planner and the ordinance, they're more sort of secondary to, you know, sort of creating ordinance that then fits what this zoning plan would be.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, no doubt that, like, a lot of the written language often originates there, but like, I mean, I think about, like, you know, the cannabis zoning, for instance, like, obviously, the council was very heavily involved in.
Yeah, but even that, you know, it's funny, because I just remember, but, I mean, but no, but really Jess Allen was heavily involved, because I remember going downstairs, she said, I remember saying, "When I took this job, I never thought I would be so versed in cannabis issues."
Right.
So, I mean, again, even that, it was something, you know, it was something that Salem thought would be good for the city, but it had to be, the city planner had to be on board, had to do the research, had to
Yeah, of course.
So it wasn't like Salem said, "We should do this," and you just did it, you know, it had to sort of be further worked out and come through planning and then come back out again.
Right.
So, I mean, well, I mean, it was just neither here nor there, but I'm just saying that it's, I don't know, I guess what I'm saying is, from a zoning ordinance perspective, usually, I guess, unless it's someone's baby, like cannabis, those with Salem and things like that, that you're involved, but not quite as much as the planner is.
Right.
But then again, but that doesn't mean that, my, the only thing that came in my mind was just as the reason why we kept city council terms two and not considered four was because it's a part-time, you know, it's a part-time gig and people's schedules change, like, and, I mean, I've had, like, a perfect example would be now with, you know, Bill Lynch. It's like, my schedule may be really tough.
Right.
And so he may, and again, he didn't change it, but he may be saying something like, "I need, like, appointments, I need something that meets 15 minutes before the meeting." So as far as trying to divvy out the workload to every committee
Right.
you know, that necessarily is not the best for the council in general, to allow the flexibility of someone whose schedule changes and, like, "Can you put me somewhere where, like?"
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting, you know, trying to work towards, like, perfect equity and time.
Right.
I'm just saying that, right now, there seems to be one committee where, like, I don't, I mean, you know, I don't mean any sort of offense that people on to, I think, are great, but just because of the sheer number of things that get introduced there and the complexity of those things, and the fact that many of those things require multiple meetings to sort of hash out, go find, like, it seems like there's, it's really frequent that we have to get, like, multiple 90-day extensions to things that come through there, and that when you introduce new things to ordinance, there's sort of never a guarantee of when they'll actually get out, just because of the sheer, there's just the amount of stuff.
Right.
So there's a ton of stuff getting introduced there, and then, you know, property meets, like, you know, quite a bit less.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that we, that property could pick up street acceptance
Oh, yeah.
utility polls and still be a committee that meets no more than
Yeah.
once a month.
Right.
But it is just, it's a little bit more, it's a little bit that they could take off of the plate of other people, that would maybe free up other, you know, other folks to get things done, just so we could get things done a little faster. So, like, obviously, this makes no change to finance, so that's a big committee that takes
Yeah, those are the conversations I would have, maybe have with you, you know, that, and I, in this, I would never put someone, I remember Pig Ass wouldn't be on planning at the ordinance, like, "No, that's just too much."
Yeah.
It'd be every single Wednesday forever, you know, so, and then also, besides that, with only three persons for a committee, you need to have other people exposed to it as well, so it's
Sure.
it's really not good to have one person on both those committees for that, for taking, for someone else then who isn't on either of those can't have that, so. I forgot my point. But, so, I mean, I guess, I think I completely can understand the shifting around of work. Do you think it requires renaming committees, or do you think it could be a conversation the new city council president has and says, "This is where these things are not going to go"? Because, I mean, will there become a time, six years from now, like, and maybe there's nothing wrong with it, "Okay, we need to rename these now," or, you know, "Now, now tell commision to need its own subcommittee."
Yeah. I mean, it's in the rules, so it's a fairly easy thing to shift.
Right.
And so the risk seems low to me.
Yeah.
I guess my one thing is, like, I mean, and it could be that we decide that some of this is a good idea, but some of it, we're going to do it a different way, but, you know, like, my idea is if I was trying to break out ordinance, that was my first thought, was how can, how can I divide that workload up?
Right.
And my thought was, like, okay, well, the zoning stuff seems like the stuff that is, you know, you got to have these meetings, you got to joint public hearings with the planning board, so you have to have multiple joint public hearings with the planning board, and then you got to go back, so maybe we break, we take that and a couple other of those types of things out, and then my thought was, there's a lot of stuff that could really, like, like, the, you know, there was one point where there was bike path stuff in both ordinance and public safety at the same time.
Yeah, but that was just, that's because I wasn't here, that's on ord, I think Owen referred it to public safety all of a sudden, I mean, I thought it was
I thought it was that Bill, like, introduced his own thing.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I remember I was here, because I was like, someone told me that, I, because I thought they were going to vote on it, and then I don't know if it was Pig or someone told me, all of a sudden Owen made, or someone made, I thought it was Owen, the argument moved to public safety, but I'm like, I was like, public safety has been involved in every single one of those meetings, so there's nothing more really of public safety to say. And then even, and then even Omar's like, "What do I have to do with it? It's an ordinance, I can't," you know, so, I mean.
Yeah. Well, so I just thought, maybe, you know, what was left of ordinance, that kind of stuff could go to public safety, but then ordinance also does things like when they were considered the plastic bag ban.
Right.
And that's not really public safety, so I just thought we could rename that, you know, ordinance and public safety, and they could handle, I mean, for the most part, you know, there's, that, they at that point would handle two documents that currently, both of them have sometimes amended, right? We have our city ordinance and our traffic rules and orders, and both of them sometimes amend those things. So to me, it was like, okay, have a committee that that's what it does, is city ordinances, traffic rules and orders. And then, from there, you know, the, our third big governing, like, book of rules is our zoning.
Right.
Have zoning handle that. That was just an idea to break them out. And, you know, and those are the only two that I'm proposing to rename.
Right. I mean, Rules and Government Relations, you know, it varies, but it's also one of those, it's pretty sleepy, pretty sleepy committees usually.
Yeah, it can be. And Rules and Government Relations is a strange, you know, in my ideal world, like, I don't know, I, I don't know how we would ever do this, but in my ideal world, I feel like I'd have rules and then government relations as a separate committee, because I feel like, I mean, just personally, I really enjoy the rules side, but government relations is mostly resolutions.
Yeah.
And I think that for a lot of people, including a lot of citizens, resolutions are really important, and, but to me, they're just not my wheelhouse. They don't really get me, like, like, I never come to those meetings being, like, "I can't wait to work on this resolution." But rules, you know, that kind of, like, system stuff is really interesting.
Yeah, well, because it makes it, I mean, I don't know, I just have a hard time. I mean, I mean, it's going to be interesting what the new council is going to do with resolutions. And I was thinking that, maybe, I mean, ever since that, I don't know what the CRC is doing, but I almost feel like if someone submits a resolution, it should be, like, then assigned to the CRC, because, I mean, part of everyone argues, like, "Well, there's no education about this," you know, people, a group of people that feel strongly about something supports something, and they show up and they convince the council they should support it, but there really isn't a dialogue, there isn't education about it, there isn't, you know, I mean, I made that same argument with the Row, it's like, "Well, we're administrative government." Like, you know, Joe, everyone here who voted for me, they're, they should be looking at, like, I can't be, I can't be there for everything, I can't vote on anything, but I think Joe thinks pretty much the same way I do, and I trust that he'll probably vote the way I would.
Sure.
And so in that case, I guess I am representing the people who vote for me. But, but it does seem like, you know, a lot of things are sent out of the council with very little input from anyone else than the group that feels that it's important to do.
Yeah. And I think that that's, yeah, I, I've been thinking a lot, I mean, maybe that's a different conversation, but I have been thinking a lot about, like, resolutions and what should we do, and should there be some sort of rule about what sort of things we have resolutions about, and should they maybe be something that we do public hearings for, because currently they're not, but kind of seems like they
Maybe, but I mean, maybe, but it's like, "Oh, my God, do we really get elected to have a public hearing about nuclear arms in Islington? I mean, is that what they want us to be doing with the $200 we get a month? I mean, that's the part that argues me, is like, I don't, I mean, if it's something, like, related to a bill that's going to be in the state house and is going to affect us, then I have a little, I have a little easier time with it. But when it's broad things like that to spend
Yeah.
because also, public hearings require money to be spent to advertise them.
Yeah.
And it's also, like, "Really?" You know, that would be almost like
Oh, that's true, yeah.
It's like
That's a good point. Yeah, I don't know, it's, but, you know, so that's, that's an example of, like, I don't, I thought about that and tried to figure out if we could take that government relations part and throw that into a different committee, and I couldn't really figure out anywhere else that's a better fit, I feel like
Quite honestly, in, for years, I mean, the Rules and Government Relations has sort of been just that, you know, committee, that if thing didn't quite fit, you put it there.
Right.
Because it was an ordinance, it was public safety, it was financing, but it was just like, it was sort of a catch-all for anything else that didn't quite
Right.
fit, was the sort of what that was sort of used for. But, I mean, it's interesting, two years, because, and maybe it's going to be this way, but certainly, you know, the only good thing that came out of '16 was a lot of involvement and activism, and certainly with you and Owen, and there's been much more work generated than there usually has been. So I think in some respects, maybe it'll continue this way, in some respects, the amount of stuff that has gone through this council, especially including resolutions, is much more than it usually is.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's probably good, you know? So I don't know, I mean, is that, is that changed, or is that going to slow down a little bit? I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, yeah, I don't know, but I feel like this is an entire other, like, this is something that I actually, I almost, I almost wrote something about resolutions, like, just a draft for a rule about, like, what are the guidelines, are this appropriate?
Right.
And quite frankly, the reason why I haven't yet is that I'm running a valley campaign, and I
Exactly. I'm at, right, yeah.
I haven't had the, the
How's it going?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, I just haven't had the time to put, really sit down and put something thoughtful to page, but I think that that, I think that's something, if not by the end of this term, then at the beginning of the next term.
Yeah.
It's like, it's a priority of mine.
Well, it's going to be, I mean, certainly, it's weird, you know, to not be there, but it's just, but it's got, it's got to be something that the council has to address, you know, and
Yeah.
what are we going to do with them? Because, I mean, it's weird, though, you know, so that was just saying to me, the last 12 years, we've probably done two, you know, and then
And I was thinking, "Oh, Monfli, or Dale."
more bond in the last, you know?
Yeah.
So, again, I mean, you know, it's, I can understand the argument, you know, it's something that the citizens are passionate about, they feel about, but I almost feel as, you know, is it, you know, I don't know, is, some, some group that's feeling very important about this moves into city council, the council will you know, what came of that, certainly, especially in some of these broader ones, starting supporting a certain legislation, was anyone educated by it? Did anyone learn anything by it? And what was
Yeah.
the purpose of it, except making a small group feel good that their, their topic was addressed and supported?
Well, right, and I think that, yeah, when I do come, it's like, that would be the sort of minimum that I would want to do, something about, like, that this clear, that's clear, like, what, what, that there's a bill or an action or something that somebody who's accountable to us in some way
Right.
is going to take, that we'd like something to take and that it somehow affects the city.
That's the thing I most wanted, they should even maybe be, like, a subset, like, a letter of support, whereas it's
Right.
you know, it's just something that this is something we believe in, we want to set it, give it, like, an optional that councils can sign on or not, you know? So, you know, a support letter, you know, maybe there could be a lower level of scrutiny and more
The one thing I do think is that when we do have this conversation, there's probably a bunch of other councilors who are going to want to
Oh, yeah.
to be involved.
Yeah, yeah, I guess some councils feel very strong, and that it sounds like almost anything should be addressed, but
Yeah. I just want to turn really quickly to what Dan
Actually, the agenda.
Yeah, what Dan wrote. So here were his thoughts, he said, "I believe that the primary committee where we can break out work is ordinance," that's basically what it is, "any change here should be run by Councilor Derby so he can weigh in." I agree, so, you know, "Before we did anything, like, any major action on this, I'd like to manage to figure out a time where Councilor Derby could join us."
Yeah, I mean, the likelihood, he would be the chair of, chair of ordinance next year, next year, too.
Yeah. I mean, at the very least, he's been the chair for quite some time, so
Sounds a better feel for the workload and
Right. And so, yeah, so I just invited him to our next meeting, agreed. Ordinances by their nature take a lot of time to deal with, we should look to reduce the load. So I agree with that. Dan says then, "All zoning ordinances can be moved to property committee," and I'm not sure I actually agree with this, because property committee really only deals with city property.
Yeah. Sort of like the past.
Yeah. So that, that was something that, and also, it's just kind of a different skill set.
Mm-hmm.
Like, one of the reasons I thought that, like, telephone poll acceptance or street acceptance would be good fits to be moved to property is because they line up really well with the sort of things granting easements that property is doing right now, where it's kind of more a, I don't know if I can put this, so it seems like there's, like, the city council, like, has two essential functions. One is to, like, come up with ideas, you know, ordinances and legislation and resolutions and stuff like that, and the other one is to effectively be, you know, a check on executive power, you know? So that's confirmations and stuff like that. And so, like, finance and appointments are very much, like
Sure.
things come to them and they vote them up or down. Property seems to fit really well into that, too, where it's that kind of, it's that sort of function, where
Right.
things are coming to them and they're either saying, "Yes, we like this," or "Or no, we don't." So, street acceptance, utility poll acceptance, you know, utility easements, all of those have to do with, like, the reason why we're even having that conversation is because these things are in some way traversing public property, you know, or in the case of street acceptance, things might become public property.
Right.
And so, to me, those all fit really nicely together, but zoning is kind of that other side of government, it's the, like, legislation side, and so I kind of, I'm not sure I agree with Dan on that point.
No, I can, yeah, I liked your, I follow the reasoning of your breakout, so, you know, of wording, I agree with it. Again, I, so it would be, did you put public, you put public safety and zoning together?
Public safety and everything, so everything in ordinance that isn't public safety, or sorry, everything in ordinance that isn't zoning.
Okay.
And everything in public safety that isn't utilities and street acceptance
Okay.
go together to become ordinance and public safety.
Okay. And ordinance would be certainly dealing with zoning ordinances.
Well, yeah, we'd re, here, uh
Oh. I mean, the zoning map is certainly planned, we would have touched that, cannabis guidance or
Right.
planners.
No, but, but they also couldn't amend it without
Right.
running it by us, so.
Yeah, I mean, I Yeah. I mean, I, I, I mean, I agree. I, I like what you thought about breaking it down.
Okay.
But I don't know who, you know, that, I think like, well, this, I don't know. Part of me is saying, well, should we wait for the new council? But then part of me is, you know, I know you would say, well, it makes sense to have it in place for the new council. And since, I mean, it is, it is, we could do everything here without renaming a single thing. But at the same point, you know, it does make it clearer what my responsibilities might be if we renamed it as such.
Right. I mean, that was just kind of my thought and that we, you know, uh, rename, sort of clarify roles and that, that might also help. Because like, I remember when, when I first got elected and, you know, um, you would send something out saying, you know, what, what, what kind of committees would you be interested in? And a lot of that for me was trying to figure out what even do these various committees do? You know, like, because, because it's not always immediately obvious. Uh, in some of the cases, there's things that, um, right, so like, I thought like, oh, like, there was a moment, I, I, I pretty quickly figured out this. I figured this out before I got sworn in, but there was a moment like, well, I really like working on housing stuff, so I should work, be on property, right? And I was like, oh, that's not what property does. Property does this kind of stuff. My, my one thought is, um, these sorts of things are hard to change midstream. So if we don't do this, that's totally fine, it's just an idea. But if we do decide that this is something that's worth doing, I think it would make sense to do it before the new council gets sworn in, so that when the new, the next president gets chosen and has to assign roles, they're, they're right there. Because otherwise you're going to be assigning roles to the existing things and then partway through the, the, the year, you're, or whenever it passes, you're going to have to say, okay, now there's these new committees and, and how do you, how do people transfer?
At that point, it would have to be strictly, the people would say the same, the names of the committees and responsibilities would change.
Right, yeah. So I just thought that would be like, the, the best time to do it would be when there's a clean slate. Well, not, I mean, obviously, most of the people are the same, but when there's like, you know, it's a fresh start. Every, you know, some people are going to want to keep the same committees, some people are going to want sort of different ones. And so I just thought that would be the right time to do it.
Right.
But I agree with Dan that really we probably shouldn't have this conversation without talking to Salem and, and probably talking to, you know, the, this, you know, the other chairs, like the current, because the, I think the current, well, Omar's obviously new to, you know, that role. But, uh, JP's been the property chair for a while.
Because he's a realtor, so he's, he's always been on the committee elections.
Right. Right. So, you know, he, so he might have some thoughts about whether that would be a good thing or, you know, whether. So maybe that's, maybe that's the next step is to, to go back, say.
Yeah, or at least, or maybe, right, like, for instance, rules and regulations, appointments, finance. Those three aren't touched at all.
No, because those, I mean, so like you said, rules and government relations, those two things are not really the same, but I don't really know how to break them out. So that's, appointments is a very, like, what goes to appointments is very clear. It's one type of thing, mayoral appointments. Or maybe in some cases, city coun, yeah, city council or, or city president appointments, but like, that's it. Yeah, finance, it's, I don't, I, there's nothing in finance that I would ever feel comfortable putting to somebody else. And there's nothing that anyone else is doing that I feel like putting on finance, especially because they've got a, a heavy workload.
I'm just saying, so if, for that next meeting, then we could ask Salem, we could ask Omar, we could ask JP.
Yeah.
And then maybe even Jeff, now that he's not on the council, but if he had any insights, he could certainly have it. But yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, you know, I think it really is just, you know, just renaming things and kind of shifting. But I, I like, I mean, I think, so just my own perspective from working with councils over the years is it's nice to have some committees that are not going to be that basic, that some people's schedule, some people just want, I want to, I just want to, no, no, I want to be on finance, I want to be on, I want to be on both. And it's like, I know you want it, but just pick one, you can always go on to the other one. But some people are just the opposite, you know, someone's sick, I just, you know, do something.
Yeah. Sure. And I mean, like, I think property will remain reasonably quiet. I mean, even if you think about all of the poll acceptance and street acceptance things, it still wouldn't have, you know? I mean, property maybe meets every third month, so maybe it would meet every other month.
And I know that, I mean, they got to get busy once the school gets gone, but, you know.
Sure. Yeah, so there'll be a big lift there for a little while. But the, in them like, you know, I don't think that, in this rules is, you know, rules is not a incredible, I mean, we've had some spurts where it's pretty busy, but for the most part, rules isn't terribly.
How did, how did the dock park get, is it property kind of?
Yeah. Um, because it's city properties that we're thinking of. Uh, we, we've got a bunch of them and we're, we're thinking of which one we send, so, yeah. Okay, so should we just go back to the council and say, we want to hold another meeting on that?
Yeah, have a little meeting and then, you know, invite the, the, the chairs that are, maybe Jeff and then, um, yeah.
Yeah, because Jeff actually, interestingly enough, interacts with all three of these committees. And would interact with them in this new, in their new roles too. So that's a really good idea. I hadn't thought of that. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll just shoot an email out to everybody and see like, if we can, by next Wednesday, if we can come up with a, a date sometime and, you know, mid-November to mid-December, that we could sit down and have another conversation. Awesome. All right.
So is that it for tonight then?
That is the only thing on the agenda, so.
Okay, let's make more shit to Jordan.
Second. All favor. Bye.